Well, as you all know, we had to have three hearings if we were going to keep our current millage rate[349.10-352.14][S07] rather than adopting the rollback rate.[352.14-354.94][S07] We've had those three hearings.[354.94-357.82][S07] We ran the ads in the newspaper as we were supposed to.[357.82-360.54][S07] There's certain dates that you have to run everything.[360.54-364.14][S07] The current M&amp;O millage rate is 17.3 millage[364.14-368.86][S07] and the current debt service millage rate is 2.418.[368.86-372.94][S07] Any questions on the rates?[372.94-375.14][S07] None?[375.14-380.54][S07] B&amp;O questions are asked for final approval of our 2017 millage rates[380.54-384.46][S07] at the current rates of 17.3 for our M&amp;O rate[384.46-387.82][S07] and 2.418 for our debt service rate.[387.82-389.14][S08] I'd recommend approval.[390.66-391.94][S01] Do I have a motion to approve?[391.94-392.94][S03] So moved.[392.94-393.94][S05] Second.[393.94-394.94][S01] And a second.[394.94-396.94][S01] A motion by Tom and a second by Ann.[396.94-397.94][S01] Any discussion?[399.54-400.86][S05] Please, we're keeping it the same.[400.86-402.74][S03] Great.[402.74-405.34][S01] All righty, I think that I would just like to say[405.34-408.34][S01] that I guess we haven't had anybody to come to any of our meetings or anything,[408.34-411.14][S01] so I think we're probably doing what the majority of the public[411.14-412.14][S01] would like for us to do,[412.14-413.86][S01] since I haven't heard from anybody.[413.86-414.86][S01] Has anybody?[414.86-417.14][S05] Everything we've heard was just misunderstandings.[417.14-418.14][S05] I wanted to explain to them[418.14-420.14][S05] we're keeping the millage rate the same.[420.14-422.14][S05] And they are filing that.[422.14-423.14][S01] Okay.[423.14-424.14][S01] All in favor?[424.14-425.14][S01] Unanimous.[425.14-426.14][S01] Thank you.[433.34-436.94][S01] Okay, and then you're also next with the school district resolution.[440.66-445.86][S07] As you all know, yesterday we sold the bonds for Alliance Academy.[445.86-451.46][S07] And tonight the board has to adopt a resolution for the bonds that were sold.[451.46-455.02][S07] So we have Roger Moore here for that.[455.02-458.82][S07] And we also have Bryce Hochman, Brian Sen from Citibank,[458.82-461.54][S07] who are actually are the underwriters on the bond issue.[461.54-464.46][S07] So Roger will come up and go over the resolution with you first.[467.66-469.26][S09] Good evening, everyone.[469.26-471.66][S09] First of all, I'd like to say that it was an absolute pleasure[471.66-473.34][S09] working with Jeff and Rick and Valerie.[473.34-477.34][S09] They did a fantastic job and really represented you well.[477.34-482.06][S09] The Public Facilities Authority has not done a transaction before,[482.06-488.34][S09] and so they had a lot of questions and really put everybody through the paces, as they should.[488.34-492.14][S09] And Jeff and Valerie and Rick knew the answer every time[492.14-494.82][S09] and they really just did a great job.[494.82-499.54][S09] So as Rick said, the bonds were sold and we will close.[499.54-502.10][S09] You will get the money on July 28th.[502.10-505.94][S09] The money will be remitted directly to the school district[505.94-510.54][S09] and deposited into your normal accounts and invested how you normally do that.[510.54-513.54][S09] The resolution that you have before you tonight[513.54-517.22][S09] basically authorizes all the execution of all the documents[517.22-520.02][S09] that need to be signed in connection with the issuance of the bonds,[520.02-525.02][S09] primarily the intergovernmental contract with the Public Facilities Authority.[525.02-528.26][S09] And that's the contract pursuant to which they agree to issue the bonds[528.26-529.41][S09] and give you the money.[529.41-532.05][S09] And you agree to make the payments to them[532.05-536.10][S09] and then turn to the bondholders an amount sufficient to pay debt service on the bonds.[536.10-539.46][S09] That's the intergovernmental contract.[539.46-543.94][S09] You also have to, you agree under that agreement to operate and manage the project[543.94-547.26][S09] to ensure, just like you normally do, all your other facilities.[547.26-549.86][S09] The other major document is the bond purchase agreement,[549.86-553.54][S09] which y'all have signed before when you do your GO bond issues.[553.54-558.41][S09] And that's the agreement that the Public Facilities Authority and the underwriter[558.41-564.10][S09] and y'all, that the bond gets sold basically by Bryce to the investing public[564.10-568.02][S09] and then y'all get the proceeds.[568.02-571.74][S09] The other major thing this resolution does[571.74-576.22][S09] is it ratifies the distribution of the preliminary official statement,[576.22-580.26][S09] which y'all are familiar with, the documents that are used to sell the bonds,[580.26-585.34][S09] and the execution of the final official statement once we put the interest rate in there.[585.34-588.26][S09] So that is what the resolution does.[588.26-592.74][S09] And I think before you take a motion to adopt the resolution,[592.74-595.22][S09] Bryce wants to talk about the sale of the results[595.22-597.14][S09] and the interest rate and actual terms of the bonds.[597.14-598.14][S10] Great.[598.14-599.14][S09] Unless you have any questions for me.[599.14-600.14][S09] All right?[600.14-601.14][S11] Thank you.[601.14-602.14][S10] Thank you for letting me work with you.[602.14-603.14][S10] I appreciate it.[603.14-604.14][S10] Thanks, Roger.[604.94-606.10][S12] Nice to be with you all again.[606.10-608.94][S12] Thank you for allowing us to work with you again as well.[608.94-612.14][S12] Just a terrific management team and staff.[612.14-619.14][S12] Jeff, Rick, Valerie did a wonderful job with the meeting about a month ago[619.14-622.54][S12] where we actually adopted the initial resolution,[622.54-624.34][S12] which allowed us to go ahead and validate the bonds.[624.34-628.14][S12] And she was in Washington and just made a wonderful talk[628.14-632.74][S12] and just did a beautiful job regarding the new high school.[632.74-638.26][S12] We did really price the bond yesterday, which is a fancy word for saying.[638.26-643.10][S12] As you probably know, in the offering document,[643.10-646.86][S12] we leave the rate and the yield and the price blank.[646.86-648.05][S12] That's what we did yesterday.[648.05-652.05][S12] We actually set those three items on your bond issue.[652.05-655.74][S12] And just as a quick reminder, the board is very highly rated.[655.74-660.82][S12] You're rated AA1 by Moody's, AA+ by Standard Poor's.[660.82-663.66][S12] That's only one notch below the very highest rating you can get,[663.66-665.10][S12] which is AAA.[665.10-669.34][S12] About three weeks ago in our marketplace, we hit all-time lows.[669.34-672.10][S12] I mean lows that have never been reached before,[672.10-676.74][S12] both in the taxable bond market as well as the tax-exent market.[676.74-682.14][S12] This is about a week after Brexit occurred.[682.14-683.74][S12] And so we hit lows.[683.74-686.34][S12] We've kind of bounced off those lows since then a little bit.[686.34-690.34][S12] But yesterday was a real good day in the marketplace for you.[690.34-693.14][S12] And what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through[693.14-696.42][S12] how we arrived at the rates and yields that we arrived at.[696.42-698.82][S12] If you open the books that were handed out,[698.82-701.46][S12] look on page one.[701.46-705.46][S12] We wanted to give you some idea of just how low rates are.[705.46-707.54][S12] And if you look on the lower half of the page,[707.54-713.82][S12] what we've done is we've graphed out by year the really percentage of time[713.82-720.54][S12] that rates have been lower in, you know, really the tax-exent market since 1986.[720.54-723.34][S12] And what you'll see in years one through seven,[723.34-729.34][S12] you know, not that unusual, but then in years eight through really 15,[729.34-732.74][S12] which is where the bonds you sold yesterday,[732.74-735.54][S12] almost zero percent of the time, as you can see there.[735.54-740.66][S12] So very, very, very near all-time lows when we marketed yesterday.[740.66-742.54][S12] And go to the next page with me.[742.54-744.14][S12] And we just wanted to lay out,[744.14-749.94][S12] we've had the fortune Brian and I have of working with y'all on your last four borrowings.[749.94-757.14][S12] And we just wanted to show where rates were when you borrowed over the last three years[757.14-761.54][S12] and the all-in borrowing cost on each of those bonds.[761.54-765.54][S12] The, you know, the 13 bonds were actually a very short borrowing.[765.54-768.54][S12] That was the refunding that we did.[768.54-772.54][S12] So that was really, really short all-in borrowing.[772.54-774.66][S12] That was a 199.[774.66-775.66][S12] That is the lowest over the last three years.[775.66-779.66][S12] But the borrowing we did yesterday was a really 15-year deal.[779.66-783.14][S12] And the all-in rate on it was a 212.[783.14-786.22][S12] And it's the second lowest that you've borrowed at.[786.22-788.14][S12] So just very, very low rates.[788.14-791.14][S12] Go to the next page with me if you would.[791.14-794.54][S12] And I wanted to tell you how we arrived at the rates we arrived at.[794.54-797.94][S12] If you look in the middle of really the page there,[797.94-800.46][S12] there is a column marked spread.[800.46-804.42][S12] And the spread is the rates above the high-grade curve,[804.42-808.94][S12] what we call MMD, Misfer Market Data Curve.[808.94-812.86][S12] And those were the yields that we started out at.[812.86-815.74][S12] And then your seller went so well.[815.74-819.54][S12] We had 24 different buyers wanting to buy your bonds.[819.54-824.54][S12] And there was a who's who, Blackrock, Goldman Sachs, JP Morgan,[824.54-827.14][S12] Newland Trust, State Farm, Allstate.[827.14-828.34][S12] I can go on and on and on.[828.34-832.14][S12] There were just some really big-time buyers in our marketplace[832.14-837.82][S12] wanting to buy your debt because of the good name that y'all gave us to market,[837.82-841.54][S12] your high ratings, how well you do around the state.[841.54-847.42][S12] I mean, you're clearly a, what we call, a guilt-edged, you know, credit.[847.42-851.42][S12] And so we were able, the marketing was so successful[851.42-858.02][S12] that in the last eight years, we had four in five, you know, times orders[858.02-859.14][S12] versus the amount of bonds we had.[859.14-863.54][S12] So we were able to lower your yields beginning in the year,[863.54-866.54][S12] really, really, really '24 and thereafter.[866.54-872.10][S12] The last eight years, we lowered your yields by, you know, two to three basis points.[872.10-873.94][S12] That doesn't sound like a lot.[873.94-878.82][S12] But what ends up happening on really the size of your deal,[878.82-888.94][S12] that ended up saving you 135, you know, $1,000 in overall debt service.[888.94-891.86][S12] The next page, I just wanted to make the point[891.86-897.94][S12] that the par amount of bonds was just over really $25 million.[897.94-902.34][S12] That we sold all the bonds at a, you know, premium.[902.34-905.02][S12] The lowest price was about 101.[905.02-908.22][S12] The highest price was just under 130.[908.22-912.54][S12] And so what that allowed you to do is to get $30 million[912.54-915.66][S12] out of that borrowing for the new high school.[915.66-921.34][S12] And on the right-hand side, the annual debt repayment on this[921.34-925.94][S12] will be right around $2,340,000 a year.[925.94-929.02][S12] There is one other item I want to stress to you.[929.02-933.42][S12] Moody's and Standard Poor's re-rated your bonds again.[933.42-936.54][S12] And Moody's made it clear, and y'all may remember this,[936.54-943.34][S12] when we did the new money earlier this year that was around 101 million,[943.34-948.46][S12] Moody's basically gave you what I would describe as like a half a notch rating up.[948.46-954.74][S12] And you got, y'all got placed on really positive outlook.[954.74-961.34][S12] They have to act on that within about a year and a half of having done that.[961.34-968.66][S12] So they're going to do surveillance on the system probably by no way the next May.[968.66-971.14][S12] And so they are really going to watch what happens.[971.14-975.86][S12] So I would encourage the board to, you know, keep on building reserves.[975.86-977.26][S12] That's very important.[977.26-981.34][S12] And I think you will get some very good news next May.[981.34-984.54][S12] We think you will receive some very good news.[984.54-987.26][S12] And they'll end up bumping the rating up.[987.26-989.34][S12] But you're doing a wonderful job.[989.34-994.14][S12] I mean, you really managed the system well, you know, soup to nuts.[994.14-998.34][S12] And it's recognized in the marketplace with these wonderful rates that you got.[998.34-1002.42][S12] And as Roger mentioned, thank you for allowing us to work with you again.[1002.42-1004.10][S12] It's always a pleasure.[1004.10-1005.54][S12] So thanks so much.[1005.54-1007.74][S12] What kind of questions do y'all have?[1007.74-1008.74][S12] I'd be happy to answer them.[1010.66-1012.94][S13] I guess we won't be calling these.[1012.94-1015.94][S12] Well, super question here.[1015.94-1021.02][S12] We did allow you to have a, you know, call option on these[1021.02-1023.86][S12] in year number 10, as we always do.[1023.86-1026.14][S12] So in the event, I mean, you never know what'll happen.[1026.14-1027.14][S13] You never know what you don't know.[1027.14-1028.14][S12] You never know.[1028.14-1031.42][S12] And so we never thought rates would be this low as they are now, you know.[1031.42-1034.54][S12] So you will have that option[1034.54-1038.14][S12] to redeem them early if you want to save money on them.[1038.14-1043.74][S12] Anytime we sell a bond that is beyond, you know, 10 years,[1043.74-1046.74][S12] we almost always have a call option on it[1046.74-1047.74][S12] so that you have that opportunity[1047.74-1053.54][S12] in the event that rates drop and you can save the money.[1053.54-1054.54][S12] But super question.[1054.54-1055.54][S12] Thanks for asking that.[1055.54-1058.82][S14] I think I had some questions for Rick and Mr. Gunn have been helpful.[1058.82-1063.54][S14] We don't, our first payment on this is not, from what I understand, until end of next year.[1063.54-1064.54][S14] So.[1064.54-1069.74][S12] Your initial payment is going to be Feb. 1 of, you know, '17.[1069.74-1075.33][S12] And then Rick mentioned that y'all had already budgeted for that, I guess, initially budgeted.[1075.33-1082.66][S12] And your debt service on that is a good bit lower than what we initially estimated.[1082.66-1086.74][S12] The actual debt service is lower as a result of these low rates.[1086.74-1091.26][S12] So it worked out really well from that standpoint.[1091.26-1093.14][S12] Well, thank you very much.[1093.14-1094.14][S13] Thank you.[1094.14-1095.14][S12] Thanks so much.[1095.14-1096.14][S12] Take care.[1096.14-1100.54][S08] Do you have any other questions for any of the gentlemen, Rick included?[1100.54-1101.54][S15] No.[1101.54-1102.54][S08] Okay.[1102.54-1104.54][S08] I would recommend approval of the bond resolution.[1106.33-1107.33][S01] Do I have a motion?[1108.33-1109.33][S05] So moved.[1109.33-1110.33][S01] Second.[1110.33-1114.14][S01] A motion by Ann and a second by Kristen to approve the bond resolution.[1114.14-1115.94][S01] Any more discussion?[1115.94-1116.94][S01] Anybody?[1116.94-1117.94][S01] All in favor?[1117.94-1118.94][S01] Unanimous.[1119.26-1120.26][S16] Thank you.[1120.26-1121.26][S16] Great job on this.[1121.26-1122.26][S01] Thank you.[1122.26-1123.26][S16] We're excited.[1123.26-1124.26][S16] We're moving forward.[1124.26-1127.02][S16] It's going to be an awesome project for our entire community.[1130.02-1135.74][S01] Okay, now we are finally to Mr. Tom Winnie with the construction update.[1135.74-1137.33][S01] Thanks to these guys, right?[1137.33-1138.33][S17] Yeah.[1138.33-1140.14][S05] We've got to keep them in a job.[1145.02-1146.33][S17] Well, good evening.[1146.33-1150.74][S17] We're thrilled to report that each of the projects under construction[1150.74-1154.82][S17] that are due for school opening in the next couple of weeks will indeed happen.[1154.82-1160.33][S17] So we have the nine certificates of occupancy already in hand by Fire Marshal.[1160.33-1162.82][S17] Furniture is already installed.[1162.82-1167.94][S17] One of the last pieces of information technology is in its final stages.[1167.94-1172.54][S17] And really everything soup to nuts in between from the small areas of the new kitchens[1172.54-1173.54][S17] is in place.[1173.54-1176.02][S17] Security cameras are in place.[1176.02-1177.02][S17] So we're in great shape.[1177.02-1179.33][S17] Open houses begin.[1179.33-1184.33][S17] North starts their open house on the 26th and then we run through August 2nd.[1184.33-1189.02][S17] So that'll be a great opportunity for the community to see these new facilities.[1189.02-1192.74][S17] So to give you a little more detail, as we go project by project,[1192.74-1194.54][S17] starting with our high schools,[1194.54-1198.74][S17] since the last board meeting at North,[1198.74-1204.74][S17] we did receive the gym certificate of occupancy just a few days after that last board meeting.[1204.74-1209.54][S17] So we always had the additions cafeteria prior to that.[1209.54-1214.33][S17] But during the past month, we finished with the landscaping and paving.[1214.33-1216.42][S17] So North is well on its way.[1216.42-1221.02][S17] Similarly, at Central, while the additions were complete,[1221.02-1226.42][S17] the re-roofing and renovations for the repurpose of the vacated spaces[1226.42-1230.42][S17] that moved into the new are currently occurring at Central.[1230.42-1234.94][S17] And now you see the front entrance at Elm Street really in its final stages.[1234.94-1237.02][S01] We had a chance to see Central today.[1237.02-1240.66][S01] And I mean, I know we've seen pictures and we knew what it was supposed to look like,[1240.66-1243.54][S01] but until you walk through it, you don't have any idea.[1243.54-1245.14][S01] It's just awesome.[1245.14-1248.82][S01] I mean, all the little things like the garage doors and all the,[1248.82-1250.82][S01] it's just so, it's so exciting.[1250.82-1251.82][S17] It is.[1251.82-1253.33][S01] It was really fun today.[1253.33-1259.14][S17] So similarly, at South High, we've gone through the full FFNE process[1259.14-1263.54][S17] and we're ready for their open house, which will be Saturday, July 30th.[1263.54-1267.54][S17] And the other main aspect that most people don't realize[1267.54-1271.14][S17] is the entire scope of East Hall, mechanical, electrical plumbing.[1271.14-1275.74][S17] And that was renovated over that short seven-week summer duration.[1275.74-1278.33][S17] So we're ready for that as well.[1278.33-1283.22][S17] And then the follow-on phases of renovation for the last phase[1283.22-1287.94][S17] that, you know, contractually they're obligated to complete next summer.[1287.94-1292.94][S17] In every case, we'll be achieving those December or prior to.[1292.94-1297.82][S17] So it'll be great just on all those existing campuses to stop construction[1297.82-1301.33][S17] and all the annoyances that go with that.[1301.33-1305.54][S17] Lambert High School similarly is now fully complete.[1305.54-1309.33][S17] And out at West, if you recall, we started construction[1309.33-1312.82][S17] just on the really first day after school ended.[1312.82-1317.02][S17] Just a couple hours ago, we got that certificate of occupancy[1317.02-1320.02][S17] for the administration counseling areas[1320.02-1324.54][S17] that needed to be done prior to administration's return next week.[1324.54-1327.33][S17] So we successfully did that.[1327.33-1330.82][S17] And then the bump-out projects of the band rooms and core,[1330.82-1333.54][S17] the foundations are well underway.[1333.54-1335.86][S17] At Denmark, really a picture's worth a thousand words.[1335.86-1338.54][S17] So site work is in progress.[1338.54-1342.54][S17] Foundations are set for the first week in August.[1342.54-1347.82][S17] So just to give you a few photos that are new from what you previously saw[1347.82-1349.33][S17] at the last board meeting.[1349.33-1352.94][S17] That's our new North Gymnasium.[1352.94-1359.33][S17] The footprint style that is similar to North, South and Central.[1359.33-1361.54][S17] The new classrooms, smart boards.[1361.54-1366.33][S17] You see some of the new furniture, school spirit colors.[1366.33-1368.66][S05] I hear the smart boards, you don't need the pen for anymore.[1368.66-1369.66][S05] You can use your hand.[1369.66-1370.66][S17] Right.[1370.66-1371.66][S05] I heard teachers are excited about that.[1371.66-1373.54][S17] Right, that should work well.[1373.54-1377.82][S17] The new competition gymnasium is now complete at North.[1377.82-1380.02][S17] This is a great area of Central.[1380.02-1384.14][S17] You see the continuity again of security[1384.14-1392.14][S17] tying the student transportation between classes now into a contiguous facility.[1392.14-1395.86][S17] Similarly, at South, now with South being complete,[1395.86-1399.33][S17] the courtyard landscaping took place just in the past few weeks.[1399.33-1404.33][S17] We also repaved that entire front section and landscaped the entire front section.[1404.33-1406.42][S17] So that's a good first impression.[1406.42-1408.82][S17] But South was really challenging.[1408.82-1410.54][S17] You got to give the design team credit.[1410.54-1412.82][S17] There was like a maze in a puzzle to that.[1412.82-1414.94][S17] And now it's really come together.[1414.94-1419.42][S17] And people wouldn't know that the facilities are 40 years between them.[1419.42-1420.82][S17] The team did a good job out there.[1420.82-1423.74][S17] So community should be excited to see that.[1423.74-1426.22][S13] And that almost looks like a rendering, so it's that good.[1426.22-1428.14][S17] Yeah, yeah, that came out really well.[1428.14-1430.42][S05] But he's right, when you're inside the new part,[1430.42-1432.02][S05] the way that, I was talking to Jeff about this just,[1432.02-1435.33][S05] the way the ceilings are done, they're bright and they're fresh.[1435.33-1437.74][S05] But when you go down the hall and you transition to the old school,[1437.74-1438.74][S05] you don't know.[1438.74-1439.94][S05] It doesn't say, oh, here's the add-on.[1439.94-1441.14][S05] It looks very natural.[1443.33-1445.74][S17] So moving over to Denmark High School.[1445.74-1451.33][S17] If you recall, the groundbreaking ceremony was Kitchens Road in the upper left-hand corner.[1451.33-1455.54][S17] So that's diagonally, that's the northern direction to the photo.[1455.54-1460.54][S17] You see the road of Mullenax that the county's doing,[1460.54-1462.22][S17] being finalized that roadwork.[1462.22-1464.74][S17] The reason why I point that out,[1464.74-1467.66][S17] you know, this is a great 110-acre beautiful site,[1467.66-1471.54][S17] but logistically it's set it up that the bus traffic,[1471.54-1476.33][S17] the parent traffic, the teacher traffic, the student traffic is all bifurcated[1476.33-1479.33][S17] between Kitchens, Mullenax and Fowler.[1479.33-1481.94][S17] Fowler being on the upper right-hand side.[1481.94-1484.86][S17] So this photo was taken two weeks ago.[1484.86-1487.94][S17] And it's still tough to see the progress, you know, on areas.[1487.94-1491.14][S17] But obviously what was green before that's now brown[1491.14-1496.14][S17] is really moving significant volumes of fill for cutting fill.[1496.14-1501.14][S17] In general, the center of the page will be the building footprint[1501.14-1506.02][S17] in the upper left-hand corner where you see the last really green space that's remaining.[1506.02-1508.22][S17] That'll be the football stadium area.[1508.22-1512.02][S17] And flanking that will be the baseball stadium.[1512.02-1516.02][S17] So again, August, first week in August, you'll see foundations.[1516.02-1519.74][S17] Fortunately, the weather's been great for us getting out of the ground.[1519.74-1524.42][S17] So as we finish these nine first-phase projects of construction,[1524.42-1526.94][S17] we'll roll right into that.[1526.94-1529.54][S05] Mr. Owen, what's the part in the front that's brown[1529.54-1533.33][S05] where, you know, if you look at Mullenax there, that section to the left of the pond,[1533.33-1534.94][S05] what's that area there?[1534.94-1536.94][S17] Let's see.[1536.94-1537.94][S17] We've got a lot of brown down here.[1537.94-1541.22][S05] If you go from Mullenax to where[1541.22-1543.42][S05] that area that's kind of L-shaped where it's all dirt.[1543.42-1544.42][S17] Go back one more screen.[1545.54-1546.54][S17] No.[1546.54-1547.54][S05] Yeah, there you go.[1547.54-1549.42][S05] So left of the pond, that brown area.[1549.42-1553.33][S17] Yeah, that's our detention area for flood,[1553.33-1555.82][S17] which is the first thing we've got to do with erosion control[1555.82-1560.54][S17] and detention before we can disturb the site.[1560.54-1562.74][S17] So before I go to middle schools,[1562.74-1565.54][S17] the high school intentionally of Alliance was left off waiting[1565.54-1568.02][S17] for the moment that occurred 30 minutes ago.[1568.02-1571.74][S17] So now that that's done, you know, in anticipation of that,[1571.74-1574.54][S17] we have pendingly, that's not a word.[1574.54-1580.54][S17] We've pre-qualified or about to nine general contractors.[1580.54-1585.10][S17] Knowing we've got a very fast-paced construction move on Alliance now,[1585.10-1588.74][S17] we needed to wait for what just happened with the bond.[1588.74-1593.14][S17] We'll get those letters out and design is in its final stages.[1593.14-1595.42][S17] We'll be finalizing that in the next month,[1595.42-1598.02][S17] submit it to the state for approval.[1598.02-1601.02][S17] Try to take it to that October board meeting[1601.02-1604.33][S17] so we can try to get, beat some of these winter months.[1604.33-1608.02][S17] Because we've got a real fast-track construction schedule on Alliance.[1608.02-1609.02][S05] Who's the architect?[1610.02-1612.33][S17] Manley Spangler-Smith, the same architect[1612.33-1614.74][S17] that did a great job for us at South High School.[1614.74-1617.22][S17] So we think they really earned it and.[1617.22-1619.22][S05] So if all goes well with the state and all that,[1619.22-1621.33][S05] when will there really be something going on over there?[1621.33-1623.66][S05] Will there really be equipment over there, work in the building?[1623.66-1627.02][S17] Well, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, December 1st.[1627.02-1629.33][S17] Just given the timing of where we're at.[1629.33-1631.74][S17] That's, that was the challenge.[1631.74-1637.14][S17] That will be the challenge and we'll overcome it, but just.[1637.14-1640.02][S17] Does anybody have any questions on the high schools?[1640.02-1643.02][S17] Okay, so moving to the middle schools.[1643.02-1646.74][S17] We have five really, I'll call it miscellaneous addition renovations[1646.74-1652.54][S17] currently underway at Liberty, North, Otwell, Piney Grove and Vicarry Creek.[1652.54-1654.82][S17] And all of those are fine.[1654.82-1659.42][S17] Only, you know, a fraction of that program is due in the next couple of weeks[1659.42-1661.33][S17] and we're well set to do that.[1661.33-1665.42][S17] The balance of that scope will carry out to the end of December.[1665.42-1670.33][S17] And by that I mean some band room renovations, additions, some special programs.[1670.33-1674.02][S17] So the key middle school projects of the three,[1674.02-1678.02][S17] DeSana, as you witnessed even, you know, we were really ready,[1678.02-1679.74][S17] you know, well over a month ago.[1679.74-1682.94][S17] Really just in the final stages there of information technology[1682.94-1686.86][S17] and communication data with Comcast and AT&amp;T.[1686.86-1691.02][S17] But other than that, you know, we're all set at DeSana.[1691.02-1695.54][S17] The same applies for South Middle School and Riverwatch Middle School.[1695.54-1698.33][S17] We've got the Louvre in now at South.[1698.33-1700.02][S17] I know that's significant.[1700.02-1703.94][S17] South, so all the additions, we have all the Fire Marshal approvals, et cetera.[1703.94-1706.82][S17] You may recall we have four, I'll call them bump-outs[1706.82-1714.74][S17] for the miscellaneous programs of the band, media, computer lab, cafeteria.[1714.74-1716.54][S17] Those will be done next week.[1716.54-1718.66][S17] And the reason why, just please recall,[1718.66-1723.22][S17] we could only really build those in the seven-week summer when we started.[1723.22-1725.82][S17] So we always knew we'd be a little tighter on that.[1725.82-1729.86][S17] And that's really the tightest element in the entire, you know, $200 million program[1729.86-1731.74][S17] that we've got turning over.[1731.74-1734.14][S17] But we're in good shape there.[1734.14-1738.82][S17] So to put a little definition, and then Brandywine Elementary School,[1738.82-1740.74][S17] same thing, ready for the open house[1740.74-1749.86][S17] and just working on the final stages of communication, data and information technology.[1749.86-1754.86][S17] So there's a shot of the famous Louvre, the additional parking out at South.[1754.86-1759.74][S17] And there's a final shot of Brandywine with landscaping and striping[1759.74-1760.74][S17] and all of that complete.[1760.74-1762.94][S05] I was going to ask Mr. Winnie, on the backside of South Middle,[1762.94-1766.22][S05] those longer stripes, is that bus parking or?[1766.22-1767.22][S17] Yes.[1767.22-1768.22][S17] Yes.[1772.74-1773.74][S17] Any questions?[1773.74-1774.74][S01] No.[1774.74-1775.74][S01] Looks good.[1776.74-1778.86][S05] Long summer is a long year, two years.[1778.86-1779.86][S17] Yes, yes, it has been.[1779.86-1780.86][S05] Good job.[1780.86-1781.86][S17] Thank you.[1781.86-1782.86][S17] Thank you, Tom.[1784.33-1786.94][S01] Okay, next under presentation and discussion items,[1786.94-1789.33][S01] we have the finance report with Mr. Rick Gunn.[1790.86-1791.86][S18] Back again.
Okay, well, this will be the last report for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Uh, we began the month with fifty-nine point nine million. Receipts for the month are twenty-three point four. Expenditures were thirty-one point eight million. We opened us a cash balance of fifty-one point six million. Um, if you remember, when we raised the millage rate last year, we were attempting to bring the fund balance back into where it should be at the fifteen percent level. This will put us right at the fifteen percent level for, at the end of sixteen. Um, next, we have revenue detail. Um, as you can see, we're right now one hundred and one point three percent to the good, excuse me, one point three percent to the good over our, over our initial budget. Uh, we still have some accruals that have to be booked for the month of July that we'll be getting in, um, so they're not represented here yet. This is a preliminary number. Um, so the number will get better than it is as of right now. This is a comparison of re, of revenue and expenditures. Our expenditures to date are ninety-nine point six percent, and again, we have some accruals that will have to be booked for expenditures, so that number will change again. But we should meet our target on our expenditure budget, and we will be a little bit to the good on the revenue side.
Let's just roll that into our reserves.
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Um, the, uh, with our fund balance, um, we've, our expenditures have gotten so large, and one percent of our budget is three point seven million, but when you think of one percent, you don't think of three point seven million, you think of a much smaller number. But that's how we've grown to. Um, the check register for the month, we issued nine hundred and forty-five checks or wires, uh, for nineteen million forty-four thousand dollars. Um, your debt service analysis for the month of June, uh, we had a major payment that was due, uh, that was one of our SPLAS payments. Uh, so our debt service, you can see a principal payment of fifteen million one hundred and forty-five thousand, and to the right of that, under SPLAS accounts, you see a transfer out of fifteen point eight million, and that covered that expense. Uh, the capital project bond investment account for the month of June, uh, if you look at that, Fund Three Oh Seven is where two thousand fourteen bond and sixteen revenues have been kept at. Uh, there's multiple transfers for the month, uh, which represents the paying the, uh, the contractors for all the work that's been done that Tom just showed you. Uh, so we have a, an ending balance of a hundred and nineteen million overall. And then this is our SPLAS collection for the month of June. We collected three million eighteen thousand. Uh, previous month, two million eight hundred and seventy-six, and if you compare us to last year at this time, we collected six percent more. So, hopefully, it'll stay that way.
Next to that, January of sixteen, is that one of our higher amounts? Have we hit that? We've got it in January and?
Uh, yes, that would, that would be the, uh, some of the Christmas spending, the pre-Christmas November area.
That's high.
Yep, and we have that spike every year. Just wish it would continue on through the rest of the year.
Okay, any questions on financials for June? Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have points of information. Dr. Bearden, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple items real quick. Uh, first of all, Mike is here tonight. Uh, he, he and his team have been incredibly busy registering new stu, students at the Hill Center, and just thank you, and please thank your entire team on behalf of all of us for all their hard work. It's incredibly busy over there. Right now, we're enrolling many, many students every single day. Uh, also, again, thank you to Cindy and Beth, uh, for the work getting employees hired, uh, for the next couple of weeks. Marty and his team making sure all the technology is up and running. Uh, I also want to thank the Forsyth County News, Kayla. Thank you for that article you did on our support staff and recognizing all of the work they do. It's been a really incredible summer here with the, with the amount of work that has taken place on all of our campuses. Uh, as Tom pointed out, it's such a short window, you know, seven weeks is not a lot of time to do all the work that needs to be done to get prepared for teachers and students, and our support staff has been tremendous, and it was nice to see them get that recognition. Uh, our teachers arrive next Thursday. However, I will say, as I have visited many schools in the last two weeks, most of them are already working. Uh, they, you can't keep them away. They're in there getting their classrooms prepared for students. It just goes to show what a dedicated team we have, and students arrive two weeks from today, and we will have about forty-six thousand of them, and we look forward to seeing them and serving them and looking forward to a great school year.
Okay, forty-six thousand. Okay, next, we have executive session. I don't think we need executive session, correct?
We do not.
So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Kristen, second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous.